All right, kids. About ready to get this party started?
You better get on that.
Got a minute?
Then you got documents from the domestic violence department.
Okay. Okay. Do you want this? Uh, I think I'll be, yeah, I'll be right there. But I think I'm good.
Oops, I took the gavel off.
Let's do it. Abea number forty-three is now called to order. This is October seventh, two thousand and nineteen. It is five thirty P.M. I'm in the Thomas J. Smith Council chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Kathleen, roll call, please.
McCambo.
Here.
Rinker.
Here.
Wilson.
Phillips.
Here.
Graham Murray.
Here.
All right. First on the agenda tonight is a certificate of recognition. And just glad to be giving this out. How many people are here for the certificate of recognition? Just wave your hands. All right, and Don in the back. Don, see, Don, you're here for poop business, but we appreciate seeing you. But it's good to see you guys here to support Kathleen. She's been such a special supporter to the council. And I know for me specifically, I would not be able to do my job without you. So even though we're celebrating forty years, I'm celebrating the last seven and a half with you. Definitely appreciate all you do. And it's good to see your family here tonight. Certificate of recognition and grateful recognition of forty years...
I told her she looks too young.
She started when she was three. Yeah, she started when she was three. Forty years of dedicated service to the city of Burlington. As of October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, we hereby present Kathleen Pearl Salisbury with the certificate of recognition. Kathleen, come on over. We're gonna get you a photo. Yeah, let's get a...
Here I go.
You got it. Okay. Well, I'm glad you're on it.
Wait a minute, are you staying for more years yet?
Not forty more.
Yeah, she's not forty more, so you're staying around.
All right, good. Then I'll take the photo. One more.
Hold on, let me take up your glasses.
They make you look smarter, Shane.
Okay, hold on, let me put it back on.
Thank you.
I need all the help I can get.
Thank you.
Kathleen P. Say a few words.
That's cute. I was gonna say forty years is four hundred and eighty months, two thousand and eighty-seven weeks, fourteen thousand, six hundred and nine days, three hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and forty hours, and twenty-one million, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred minutes. Felt like a...
You forgot, you forgot how many headaches were...
Oh. And how many councils, I didn't do all that. But it feels like, actually, forty years sounds like a long time, but it feels just like a moment in time. And so I just wanted to thank my family for attending tonight's council meeting. Thank the mayor and council, city manager. Thank you.
Before you come back to the table, can I have you close that door? Close those doors, please. This is something that she's learned after forty years' service. I'm gonna share it with the rest of the group here tonight. Kathleen didn't know that I was gonna do this. Kathleen, would you show them how a person's supposed to leave the book? You're not gonna show us tonight? Okay, then you can open up the door. She's being a jerk about it. Kathleen, we really appreciate you and all that you do. Next tonight, we have some proclamations. The first is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Just got that. Peanut butter.
Your honor, I have a proclamation... Whereas domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, causing long-term physical, psychological, and emotional harm. And whereas domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, causing long-term physical, psychological, and emotional harm... We got that on there twice, but hey, it's worth it repeating, right? And whereas one in three Americans has witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children who experience domestic violence are at higher risk for failure in school, mental illness, substance abuse, suicide, and may choose violence as a way to solve problems later in life. And whereas domestic violence in rural communities exists as a hidden, silent, and often unrecognized crime that is often underreported. And whereas through the inspiration, the courage, and persistence of victims of domestic violence, their children and advocates and communities are learning to recognize the impact of violence in the home and within intimate relationships. And whereas the Domestic Violence Intervention Program has worked to end violence in intimate relationships for over forty years through the collaborative partnerships of advocates, volunteers, local municipalities, criminal justice, health and human services, faith communities, business leaders, and private citizens. And whereas our community's achievements should be commended, and we must continue our commitment to respect and support victims of domestic violence and to prevent future violence within our community. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, hereby proclaim the month of October twenty-nineteenth as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Burlington, Iowa, and we urge all citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking from our community. Signed and sealed the seventh day of October twenty-nineteenth, Shane A. McCambo, Mayor. This goes out to Allison Peterson and Crystal Yoder. If you wanna come down, please.
Can I get like to have a word, please? Yes, can be, thank you. I think I need to grab, I think I have some statistics on this paper I left over here.
So, yeah, my name is Allison Peterson. I am the rural manager for Domestic Violence Intervention Program. And as we're sitting there, we realize that we give you all our statistics, and I don't remember them off the top of my head. So, as you could see on the sheet that Crystal had given you before the meeting started, it kinda broke down some numbers that we've had throughout the past year for our program. And here in specifically Burlington, we've served two hundred and twenty-eight individuals over the past year.
How many?
Two hundred and twenty-eight.
Two hundred and twenty-eight.
That's just in Des Moines County.
That's specifically Burlington.
Oh, specifically Burlington.
Specifically. We have two forms, and I wish I could remember Des Moines County as a whole, which that number escapes me, but here in Burlington is two hundred and twenty-eight. I have worked with DVIP for the last five years, and each year, our numbers increase in these rural communities and these rural counties. And it's kinda bittersweet that we do have those numbers growing, but it's amazing that we're getting the word out, that people know that they can come to us, we're a safe place. And that's really kind of our goal, is to have as many people reach out to us as possible. Throughout, with our outreach clients, you can see on there, it's one thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven. That's throughout our entire eight county service area. We have outreach advocates in all those communities that are on the road, going to anywhere and everywhere to distribute our information or meet anybody where they're at. We do have office spaces, but more often than not, we're meeting in very random locations, like a McDonald's or a park, or we've met in county roads by certain cornfields before. It's wherever that individual feels the most comfortable meeting us at, we go there. Crystal is part of our housing program, and I will kinda let her talk on what she does just because housing is such a big question that we get on, really any kind of presentation or proclamation that we do, it always kinda goes back to housing, so I want her to talk.
Yeah, so as a housing specialist for the Domestic Violence Intervention Program, it is my job to work with the clients that are fleeing domestic violence or have been removed from the domestic violence for some time, but yet they're still struggling, not able to just kinda get up on their feet. I don't, I don't work directly with, well, I mean, I do work directly with clients that need emergency sheltering, but as you may or may not know, in March of two thousand and eighteen, the Domestic Violence Shelter in Burlington closed down as a domestic violence shelter. So if I get those calls that people are in emergency situations, they need to flee, they need to know where they can go, we can hook them up with the contact in Iowa City, which is where our local DV shelter is located. Or else if they want to try to leave the state altogether, I will try to locate other DV areas in other states as well. Whatever we need to do to meet the client's needs, I mean, our duties change on a daily basis depending on what the client needs. As far as the Domestic Violence Shelter closing, the YMCA owns or has the endowment for the domestic violence, what was the Domestic Violence Shelter. And the last year, they approached DVIP and said, "We would like to continue to keep the endowment on the building, but we really don't have the know-how or the manpower to run it as a DV shelter any longer. Could you maybe work with us in taking over services there?" DVIP was more than happy to do that because we were already working with the clientele that was going through there anyway. Unfortunately, we were not able to keep it open as a domestic violence shelter because of state funding. We already get that, and that's how our DVIP shelter in Iowa already with cities run. So they really put their minds together and said, "What can we do with that? What can we do with that building? How can we make it work?" So we decided that maybe it would be best for our clients in the area to turn it into a transitional housing program. And I'm not aware of Burlington having any other transitional housing programs in town. So what that means is transitional housing program is it means that clients that are removed a little bit from the DV, meaning it's no longer an emergency situation, their abuser's not looking for them, they're not stalking them, we don't have to worry about them coming there, hunting them down. If they could apply to come into the Journey House, and if they're approved, they can stay up to three months for rent. Everything's free there. They don't pay rent, they don't pay utilities. And then within that three months, they're working with me on case management. They will come in and tell me what, tell me what your barriers to getting housing. Some people, you know, they have felonies on their records, so they can't be approved for a lot of the subsidized housing or Section Eight housing. Maybe they don't have employment, maybe they have a bad credit history, so landlords aren't wanting to report to them. Those are the things that I work with them throughout the three months that they're there. That way, when they transition out at the end of three months, they are in a better situation. Again, my job changes daily on what clients need because there's a multitude of things. The biggest thing that I think surprised me when I got into this work is that it's not just domestic violence that most people are dealing with, it's the things that kinda come with that, substance abuse, mental health, alcoholism. So a lot of times, you really have to dig through all of those issues before we could even really get to the domestic violence issues at hand. So really, my job really just, there's all kinds of things that I need to do with these clients to help them be successful. And really, though, it comes down to them. You know, I can show them where to go, and I can support them along the way, but they really have to buckle down and put in the work to do that. And the majority of my clients do that, and we've been very successful with, at the end of three months, people being able to move out and get their own housing. I just took a client today, and she picked up her keys, and she was almost in tears. And she says, "It's been six years since I've had my own, my own place with my own keys." So it's amazing what we're doing. You do have a calendar up there that tells us Domestic Violence Awareness Month. There's a lot of activities that we have going on this month. And again, sorry, I didn't save a calendar to look at, but I do know that the big thing here in town will be our Shop for Safety, which will be at the two local Hy-Vee's on October thirteenth, which is this following Sunday, from eleven to three. People can come in that are shopping, we can hand them a needs list as they go in, and if they wanna donate, they could purchase that while they're making their purchases and drop it off on their way out. And we take everything, hygiene products, toilet paper, paper towels, gift cards, and that usually sustains our program throughout the year. Because when clients leave the Journey House, I make sure they have all of that stuff when they go. People donate towels and wash rags and bedding, and as much as I can ship them out with, I do. And then clients that aren't in the Journey House can also say, "Hey, I'm really, you know, really struggling making men's eat, making men's eat with meat with my paycheck," you know, so we can help them with diapers and laundry detergent, so they could put that money towards their, you know, their housing costs and stuff. So it's a great program, and there is information. I left a little bit of information on the table if anybody here would like some of that information, which has our local numbers on there and ways they can donate, so, yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all the hard work, all that you do, and just wanna encourage you guys to keep grinding at it. It's a shame that we have to have a month for this, and people need to understand that love doesn't look like people putting your hands on, people putting hands on you. Some people haven't figured that out yet, but again, thanks for all the hard work.
Yes, and I did forget to mention that the Journey House of Burlington does have a Facebook page. If you guys wanna go in there and like that, that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you for what you do, Lee. Okay, next week, I have two thousand and nineteen Fire Prevention Week.
Yes, I have a proclamation here, whereas the city of Burlington is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Burlington. Fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed two thousand, six hundred and thirty people in the United States in two thousand and seventeen, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to three hundred and fifty-seven thousand home fires, the majority of U.S. fire deaths, four out of five, occur at home each year. The fire death rate per one thousand home fires reported to the U.S. fire departments was four percent higher in two thousand and seventeen than in nineteen eighty. And whereas, when the smoke alarm sounds, Burlington residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety. Burlington residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Burlington residents should make a home escape plan, draw a map, drawing a map of each level of the home, showing all doors and windows. Burlington residents should practice the fire, the home fire escape plan with everyone in the household, including visitors. And whereas Burlington residents should practice the home fire escape drill at least twice a year during the day and at night. Burlington residents should teach children to escape on their own in case adults can't help them. Burlington residents should make sure everyone in the home knows how to call nine-one-one or the local emergency number from a cellphone or neighbor's phone. And whereas Burlington residents should practice using different ways out. Burlington residents in a real emergency, in a real emergency, should get low and go under the smoke to get out quickly. Burlington residents should get out and stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, or things. Burlington residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the two thousand and nineteen Fire Prevention Week theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape, Plan and Practice Your Escape," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October sixth through twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all of the people of Burlington to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the Burlington Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week, two thousand and nineteen. Signed and sealed the seventh day of October, two thousand and nineteen, Shane A. McCambo, Mayor.
Bruce. Bruce, I saw you on a bike the other day.
Thank you so much.
Yes, you did. Was that you on Central Street?
Yes, yes. I've been riding a lot. Thank you, Mayor and council, for the proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Week. I'm Battalion Chief Bruce Workman with the Burlington Fire Department. I'd like to, before I highlight some of the items that Ms. Wilson brought, as you know from the agenda, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And through the fire chief and the firefighters local, we sold some T-shirts, and we raised this T-shirt, and we raised six hundred dollars for the Great River Medical Center Cancer Center, so that's what we did with that prize. So I'm kinda showing this off tonight. Fire Prevention Week started in nineteen twenty-two, in part to commemorate the Great Chicago Fire of eighteen seventy-one, in which about three hundred people died. Incidentally, there was a fire in Door County, Wisconsin, the same day that killed over fifteen hundred people. It was called the Pechtigo, Wisconsin Fire, and nobody's ever heard of it. So Chicago was the Metropolitan Center, got the news. And Fire Prevention Week always falls on the week during October ninth, when the most damage was done in the Chicago Fire. It's a time for all of us to step back and look at what we're doing in our homes in place of work to practice in preventing fires from starting. This week, we're going out into the schools. We started today, and we do fire drills in the school and evaluate and give advice to the principals, teachers, and students for what they could do better. But so far today, things have gone very well. In Iowa, to date this year, two thousand and nineteen, there's been thirty-eight fire deaths. Cooking is still the leading cause of fires in homes and fire injuries, it's most likely rooms for you to have a fire in. So a good general rule is if you're cooking, don't ever leave your kitchen. That's how far it starts, is when people leave their kitchens and the food is cooking and it's unattended. The theme for this week's fire prevention is "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape, Plan and Practice Your Escape." Just reiterating councilwoman's words. In this plan, you should practice it, everybody can say, "Yeah, I know two ways out of my house," but until you've actually done it and practiced it with your family or your partner or spouse, it'll show you, just walk through the physical steps of doing it and have a meeting place outside. Have two ways out of every room, teach the children how to escape, never go back into the house for any pets, people, call nine-one-one from a cellphone or a neighbor's phone. The practice should include testing the smoke alarm and starting the, starting the smoke alarm to start the drill, get low and go, get out fast. And one other thing is if you compartmentalize a fire, if you close the door to the room you're leaving, that prevents the fire from either spreading out of that room or getting into that room. So just containment is a, is a big, a big plus. Closing doors helps. That's one of our requirements in the schools, to have all the doors closed when teachers leave the room. So we were going out to the schools, visiting all the schools. Each school will have a first, second, and third place winner, and there will be a grand prize winner for all the combined schools, and that grand prize winner will receive a large trophy. And Bickel's Bicycle and Fitting, as usual, have donated a bicycle to the grand prize winner. So thank you to Tyler and Melinda Bickel of Bickel Cycling, and Tammy McCoy at the Art Center, and her staff, who are the impartial judges of the poster contest that we have every year for fourth graders. So once again, thank you, council, mayor, for your proclamation, and thank you, citizens, for coming tonight.
Thank you, Bruce. Allison and Crystal, you guys don't have to stick around here for the ugly stuff. You can get on out of here. Thanks for coming down. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed that are Item One consent agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine, or considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual, finances and miscellaneous, submitted in previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have three resolutions. The first is a resolution approving the replacement of Valley Street rail crossing with Burlington Junction Railroad. The second is a resolution approving the sale of a fire engine to the Gulfport Gladstone Fire Protection District. And the third is a resolution revising and updating the twenty-eight E agreement for the City-County Health Care Plan, COBCO. And then we have a date set for a public hearing for October twenty-first, and that is for consideration of an ordinance submitting Section fifty-eight point one-three, type A, permit, general standards of Chapter fifty-eight, noise control of the Burlington Municipal Code. Is there somebody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda? I see none, council? Get a motion, please.
Your honor, I move to approve all listed under Item One consent agenda.
Second. Moved to second. Kathleen P.
McCambo.
Hi.
Rinker.
Yes.
Wilson.
Hi.
Phillips.
Hi.
Graham Murray.
Hi.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight is a hearing, is consideration of a sale of property locally known as sixteen oh seven Osborne Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Most...
Property, again, at sixteen oh seven Osborne Street is located on the west side of Osborne, south of Core Street. It's a property the city acquired through the abandoned building program. It's a derelict property that was demolished. The neighbors on either side have expressed interest in acquiring a portion of the lot. What we have here is bringing forward the condition to sell the north half to the neighbor on the north at sixteen oh nine Osborne, and the south half of the lot to the neighbor on the south at sixteen oh five Osborne. Our general requirements for vacant lots are either being purchased by adjacent neighbor and combined to increase their lot size or construct a new home on the lot. So with both neighbors expressing interest, it's being brought forward in the Exhibit C conditions to sell the north half and south half to each adjacent neighbor for three hundred and fifty dollars each.
Sounds good. Start with the audience, any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none, council?
I don't have any concerns here.
Good. Ruby. LGM.
Motion to close.
Second.
Moved to second. Kathleen?
McCambo.
Hi.
Rinker.
Yes.
Wilson.
Hi.
Phillips.
Hi.
Graham Murray.
Yes, please. Your honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of the property locally known as sixteen oh seven Osborne Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second. Moved to second, let's vote it in.
McCambo.
Hi.
Rinker.
Hi.
Wilson.
Hi.
Phillips.
Hi.
Graham Murray.
Hi.
All right, number two, consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of right-of-way located adjacent to eighteen fifteen to eighteen forty-five, Des Moines Avenue, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisdale.
This is a vacation of, portion of right-of-ways that are surrounded by Carly Nelson Company. The north-south alley, Carly Nelson owns property entirely on both sides of the alley. It's primarily served as a driveway for their purposes. The east-west right-of-way shown in green was a portion of, or described as a portion of Cash Street that was never utilized or improved for Cash Street, utilized for storage and parking by Carly Nelson as well. So this is vacating both of these former right-of-ways and selling to Carly Nelson to be combined with adjacent property owned by Carly Nelson. There is a sewer that runs down over the hillside. Here, shown in green, part of the conditions would be that no permanent structure shall be located over on either side of that existing sewer line within the vacated right-of-way. And then access to that if needed for the repair to the sewer there in the alley right-of-way. But sale price of the vacated alley is five hundred dollars.
Good. Questions or concerns from the audience?
Ruby Gertis, I live at nineteen oh nine, right next door to Nelson's. And I was wondering, while you changed the map, can you put the better one back up there where it shows the... The green, the green part runs right next to us, and I just wondered, is that their property? Is that part of that ours? Or, well, so there's a benefit fence.
Tisdale.
The green portion is, I guess, platted as right-of-way that was being vacated. If you continue the Cash Street right-of-way over thirty feet is the southern half of Cash Street came out of this property. No right-of-way came out of the property to the north, which would be the natural sixty-foot right-of-way. So it's being sold to Carly Nelson as the southern half. The northern half of that Cash Street right-of-way was never taken out of the property to the north.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, 'cause I couldn't, I couldn't figure out where they were going with that.
So it'd be about the fence line there.
And the other question I had was, our trash is picked up at the end of our driveway, like right where that yellow part is, the yellow. So we're gonna have to put our trash out on the highway?
Des Moines, or, yeah, Blood Road.
It doesn't list our... It doesn't list our address. It just lists the other, because there's no houses along there anymore. But, you know, like 1845 was the fire department burned that one a few months ago. But, so our trash is gonna have to go out on the street, out on the highway?
Correct, yeah.
Where we put the recycle?
Yes.
Okay. And the other question I had was, the part that goes from the yellow to Des Moines Avenue, now who's gonna take care of that? Is that, that's gonna be the city?
Though the yellow part...
No, no, no. From the yellow part out to the highway, out to Des Moines Avenue.
Right. It's possible to affect your ability to access your property. We discussed that last week.
No, but what I'm getting at is it's in terrible shape. It's like collapsing. And I just wondered, how do we get somebody to fix it?
It's currently a private driveway on Carly Nelson property.
Well, but see, we use it too. And, but see, they're not claiming that. So, who has to pay for the upkeep of it?
Eric Coon's the portion between Bluff Road and their driveway.
Between here and here?
Yeah.
That previously is shown as part of this property here for Carly Nelson.
So, the 18...
What, it had to be part of Cash Street at one time, right? Because you said Cash Street was what they were.
It showed, on the deed for this property, it shows the 30 feet of vacated area to the north. We included that in the description because it wasn't clear when it was vacated. But it's shown on their deed with this property at 1845, we've included it in the description to continue this green portion all the way out to Des Moines Avenue.
So, the road that they use to access their property from the south is currently owned by Carly Nelson, correct?
Yeah, they have the deed to it.
So, that would be Carly Nelson's problem to take care of that.
Yeah. They're not required to by our code, per se. It's a private, just like a private driveway. It's not a public street or a public alley. If they have an easement over it, then that would have to be in that easement language.
Do you know, does Ms. Gertis, does her home have an easement on that drive as far as access goes?
I, I'm not sure offhand. I'd have to look a little further on that.
We always just thought it was part of the alley, you know? But I knew at one time it was a street, you know? That's my husband.
Husband.
That little portion of alley there...
What's husband's first name?
Huh?
What's your first name?
Laverne.
Okay.
That little alley there that goes out to the highway, or Des Moines Avenue, whatever, is getting damaged because they, they run heavy equipment over that alley and break it up. And it's been repaired a lot of times through the years, and it's just, it's just buckling. And if they're not gonna, Nelson's is not gonna take care of that as far as a new alley there, a new cement, be able to handle their heavy equipment, then somebody's gonna have to do something because it's, if you don't, it's all right with them because they just run their heavy equipment over and they don't care about...
Let me ask you a question, Laverne. Isn't, isn't, isn't that the only outlet of that alley, though, is down on Cash Street? You can't come out elsewhere, can you? Because they have cars, too.
No, I have another, I have another driveway, but next to Casey's.
I'm talking about Carly Nelson getting out of the alley.
No.
It would make sense that they're gonna have to maintain that.
They can go out on the south side.
They can't go out on the south side?
Actually, they can go on the south side.
Yeah, well, they, but they can't, they can't go out there with any heavy equipment.
Oh, no.
No. They go out there right now with their parking lot people that work there in the office.
That's what I was wondering.
They do that, but as far as going straight into their yard, it's, they have to go into that little alley there in. And if it isn't something done real quick, and I heard there was a sewer underneath there that it's just gonna all collapse.
There's not a sewer under this portion to the north. It's running through the middle.
Through the middle. Eric, and they already on the, I think I'm reading it correctly, 1845, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
There is a sewer drain right at the junction of...
Where that green and yellow?
Yeah. There is a, there is a sewer drain there, and it's been repaired several times.
Yeah, the city's been a couple of times fixing it because it collapsed.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. They could just fix the drain part, but the rest of the street is crumbling.
And they had, somebody had the lid open and looked down in there, and they said it's, it's just full of cement and stuff that's, it's been repaired so many times.
Is there a chance I can, I'd like to, I just can't visualize it, you know what I'm saying? I'd really like to go down and take a look at that.
Well, you don't wanna, you don't wanna drive a car that rides real low because you have to go real slow. Otherwise, you're gonna bottom out.
But I think, I think the area in question isn't affected by the resolution tonight. The resolution tonight is just...
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
You're more concerned about the road that goes from Des Moines County or from Bluff Road.
Right. But who's gonna be responsible for taking care of it?
Well, the way, the way, the way that Eric just said, it's actually Carly Nelson's.
Yeah, right now, Carly Nelson owns that property.
But they're not claiming that part. That's why I asked, because they're not showing, they were claiming that little part of it.
And he's got it on the GIS up here, but the lot line for that, I think Eric will kinda show you on there on the map, the lot line runs north of that road. So, the house, when they purchased 1845 Des Moines Avenue, included the road that provides you access to the south side of your property. What's your physical address?
1909 Des Moines Avenue.
Do you guys have any other questions for them? I'll be stopping down to visit you two tomorrow if you're not around. Somebody says some black bald dude was in your yard. You know who was.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I'm Chris Smith from Carly Nelson, and I appreciate the conversation here. I believe it is our understanding that 1845 alley belongs to the property that we did already buy. And regarding the condition of the alley, it is our intention to repave that alley. We've already actually done about half the length of that alley. We tore it out several years ago and repaved it, which is part of our position about vacating the alley is, is we have repaved part of the alley, and we maintain the alley. And we do intend to come out to the east, out to Bluff Road, and put in a larger radius there so we can get semis around that corner.
Okay.
A little bit easier now, so.
Good deal.
Sure.
But, yeah, it is our understanding that east-west portion in question does belong to us currently, so.
And your intention is to repave it?
It is, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification on that. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thanks for coming down, guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any other concerns from the audience? I see none. Your Honor, a motion to close.
Second.
Moved to second. Kathleen?
McCambe.
Aye.
Rinker.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray. Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of right-of-way located adjacent to 1815-1845 Des Moines Avenue, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Moved to second. Kathleen, let's vote it in.
McCambe.
Aye.
Rinker.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray. Aye.
Resolutions.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2019 North End Odor Control Project at the Burlington, Iowa wastewater treatment facility.
Second.
Don Juan.
In your work session packet, and I included it in this packet as well, it indicates the purpose of the project, which was, the purpose of the project is to install air scrubbing units, ductwork, and associated covers over wells, tanks, and equipment to capture and remove odorous gases emanating from the raw wastewater as it's being processed at the wastewater treatment plant. We're located down on the riverfront, just on the upstream side of the Burlington Northern Railroad Bridge as it crosses the river. In that council item memo, it indicated at the work session that we had received a letter from our consultants. It recognized that we had received two bids, and the lowest bid was from Carly Nelson in the amount of $454,700. At that time, Carly Nelson had submitted a letter indicating that a subcontractor of theirs that was responsible for supplying a significant portion of the materials that are part of that project, their subcontractor had withdrawn from the project indicating that, in fact, they could not meet the specifications and requirements of the project. And in removing themselves from them, Carly Nelson was forced to ask us to remove them to, they'd have to withdraw their bid unless we would consider allowing them to submit a change order that would allow them to then work with the second low bidder subcontractor who could provide materials to meet the specifications and enable them to complete the project. But that cost to do so was approximately, at that time, they thought it was around $25,000. Since then, it was clarified that it was going to have to be $26,373. So, what you have before you is a resolution, actually, two resolutions. The first one is for the contract. The second one is for the change order, and they're integrally connected. They will withdraw, and I believe this material is part of the attachments, that was part of the change order. They have a letter in that attachment that indicates that they are willing to withdraw the letter requesting withdraw. I know that's kinda hard to say, but as long as the city is willing to accept a change order in the amount that it's costing them to use their second lowest bidder. There were concerns expressed, and I think it was mentioned in the council item at the work session. The engineers recommended rejecting or accepting the withdrawal, going after the bid bond and rebidding. The third option that was included in that item was to actually go ahead and try to work with the change order. There was a question of, can we do this or not? I believe the city manager contacted the city's attorney, went over that possibility with them, and they returned an opinion that, in fact, it was allowable to do so, and it was allowable to not only accept the contract at the original bid amount, but also to accept the change order at that same council meeting. That's why you have both resolutions before you at this time.
Right on.
Now, if you were to read the resolution, I think it would walk you through the thought process.
Thank you, Don. Questions or concerns from the audience? Let's see if there's no questions. That means Don was thorough. All right. Satisfied, Council?
Satisfied.
Yes.
Kathleen?
McCambe.
Aye.
Rinker.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray. Aye.
Number two.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing approval of change order number one for the 2019 North End Odor Control Project at the Burlington, Iowa wastewater treatment facility as submitted by Carly Nelson and Company of Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Anything you want to say on that, Don? That you already, that you already said?
Pertaining to change order?
Any que, I don't know, I'm just asking. Any questions from the audience on number two? I see none. Council? Thank you, Don. Kathleen?
McCambe.
Aye.
Rinker.
Yes.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray. Aye.
Okay. Well done.
Done with me?
We're done. Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
At this time, and thank you guys for being so patient, before we do entertain comments from the audience, I would just like to recognize candidate Bill Moffin in the audience, and candidate Robert Kreischer in the audience tonight. Good to see you, gentlemen. We appreciate seeing your faces tonight. So, comments from the audience, not everybody at once. Yes, ma'am. Just like to remind everybody that we can't, these are comments from the audience, so it's not on the agenda. We can't have a back and forth, but if there is some extra insight or something that you want, you're more than welcome to stick around till we get a head from behind this desk, and you can jump any of us and say what you gotta say. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Marilyn Light, and I'm here for the Steamboat Senior Center, the seniors who partake in activities there.
And I'm Shirley Clooney. I'm the president of the Golden Oldies. We're a group in at the senior center.
We're concerned about the parking passes. We understand that they're going to be eliminated, the senior parking passes. They allow us to park at, over the time limit. Whatever activities we have, we get to park longer. Because Golden Oldies, some of those ladies come at nine and don't leave until 2:30. The card players come at noon, and they're over at four. Thursdays, if you come to potluck and then you stay for the dance, it gets over at 3:00. This is a problem. It's a problem for seniors to come in and get the passes. You know, they park, they come in, they get the passes, they take them out to their car, they come in, do their activity, and then they, when they leave, they go out, they get the pass and bring it back in, and they have to go back out to their car. So, that's bad enough, but, you know, if they would have to try and move their car to where, you know, I, we just want you to be aware that this is a real problem for seniors.
I've got, I've got some written down here.
Okay.
I put, I am Shirley Clooney. I live at 11721 Burlington. I'm the president of the Golden Oldies. We have normally 30 people in our group, but on a given day, it's around 20. I understand that you want us to move to the depot on the north side as soon as it is ready for us to do so. We don't mind doing this, and the only thing that we are worried about is the parking until we do that, until we do move. We are asking you to please let us use our parking tickets until we do move. Because we have, about half of our people have walkers, they have problems with their legs, health problems that they, you know, it just, it's really hard for them to walk too long, too much of a distance. And I, I guess you're considering on making that parking lot block down south as a 24-hour parking. But even that, it's kind of a little upgrade, up walk, you know, kinda like a little hill. We've got some that it would be very hard on even just to do that. And some of us that come early, we come early to get everything set up, and sometimes we have to make three or four trips to our cars to get everything out of the car. So, to do that, that would be quite an exhausting, you know, trip to do. We, we were told it'd take about three to four, four months to get the, the north side of the depot fixed for us so that we could move down there. So, this is why we are asking if we could please still use our parking tickets until then.
I want to say, I appreciate you guys coming down. Stick around. Don't you guys go anywhere. We'll be done here in just a second.
Okay.
I want to talk to you both.
Okay.
Okay.
To clarify, I, I...
To clarify, I, 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 um, did show them the north side of the depot as a potential option, uh, for them to move into. Uh, clearly, it's the council's authority to decide whether or not they go in there. So, I, I didn't necessarily make any promises, I didn't, maybe there's some miscommunication.
Thanks for the clarification.
But, I, I did show them as a potential option, you know, a, a smaller space, where the utility bill would be quite a bit less. So, you know, there's nobody that was currently looking at the facility, so that was the reason why it was showed to them.
Okay.
So, just as a clarification, that nothing was, nothing was done on our end.
Any other, anybody else from the audience, comments or concerns? Mr. Sheehan? He's a year older and you still look the same.
Awful.
Welcome to my world, friend.
Leon Sheehan, eighteen twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. Um, I guess I'm seeing where the Cascade Bridge is arising once again for consideration, or possible consideration. Somewhere, somehow, leadership in this community's gonna have to realize, you don't have the money now, you're not gonna have it five years from now, you're not gonna have it ever. With the liability that you have, even though it's not on your books, for repairing the sewer systems, and you've got issues arising with the waterworks as well, there's no way you're ever gonna be able to fund doing the Cascade Bridge. Pay somebody, or let them take the scrap metal as payment, but that needs to be put to bed once and for all. You're never gonna be able to afford it. Population's declining, uh, with your economic incentives, your tax base is declining, you're not gonna be able to do it. It's time to face the music.
Thank you. Do we have any other, uh, questions or concerns in the audience?
Mark Cameron, I live at nineteen oh four South Sixteenth Street. There was, uh, the list of leaf pickup was put in the paper Saturday. And in the rules, it says that you can no longer use your old trash cans. I'm not talking the new ones that we now use for trash, I'm talking the old ones. That's just wrong, people. There are a lot of people out here that are on fixed incomes, low income, that can't afford to go out and get those leaf bags. So, you guys need to rescind that and make it so we can use those trash cans. Now, y'all know, I worked for the city for thirty-seven years. I know those sanitation trucks can pick up those leaves. We did it for the street sweepers, we put a chute on the back, those leaves could be dumped right in there. So, a maintenance issue, I don't buy that. The cans being too heavy, well, you know what? People had to drag them out there to get them out there in the first place. So, I don't buy that either. You need to address this, you need to make it so we can use those cans.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Well, you heard that.
Certainly did.
Thanks, sir.
Do we have any other, uh, comments from the audience? I see none.
I, I have one other thing I would like to say. I would like to thank Linda for responding to my email.
You're very welcome. I, I try to, some days I get a lot more letters than others, but I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Did you have any?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone, other staff?
We have radio.
Yes, uh, counsel, you have radio on Wednesday?
Yeah.
I cannot.
And then, uh, city day, um, has typically been done in the park last recent years. Uh, we've, we've decided to switch it up, um, maybe Eric was gonna talk about it, I don't know. City day is gonna be at the depot this year, on October nineteenth. Unfortunately, I have a prior engagement on that same day, uh, so I will not be able to-
Just a tiny one.
Something like that. Uh, but it is between one and three on October nineteenth, and it'll be at the depot. And then, did you have something, Matt? Chief, sorry.
I just sent you an email earlier tonight, but Thursday at one fifteen, Congressman Dave Lopesak will be at Central Fire Station, so, we got an AFG grant, and every, whenever we get a grant, he likes to come and visit with us about the, what we're doing with the grant money, and maybe stay, take a station tour, so you're welcome to, to come along for that. One fifteen, Congressman time, so you can-
Thanks for the clarification.
That's the clarification, that's, so. I think that, you know, they schedule a lot of things during the day, so I, I give them a little slack there, so, but, one fifteen.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
The only other thing that I have on here from Jim's notes is there's a community forum, uh, Thursday evening. Didn't say where, but I didn't know if that was-
At the loft at, yeah, at the loft at five-thirty. Um, for those that missed out on that, uh, come on down and, uh, participate and let your voice be heard. We're going to, uh, have some conversations, and hopefully we can get some, uh, something accomplished on that, so. John, you, radio? Or, or did we, did we choose who's doing it? I'm available.
I'm available, who else wants to do it? I'm always available.
I am not available.
Linda?
I have to look at my calendar.
So-
I was playing.
Matt and I, I hear you from, from you, and I can step out, okay?
Right on. Tisdale?
Are you sure?
Kathleen P. No comments? Okay. I just wanna say this, just for the record, nobody ever leaves a building like Kathleen. You have to, you just have to see it to believe it, but she just, the way she closes the door. Are you sure you wanna show them real quick?
I want a demonstration.
It's really interesting, she learned it in college, but anyway, peanut butter.
I wanna thank you, everyone, in advance for your support of Downtown Partners. Our one and only fundraiser of the season is tomorrow night, and this is an event you do not want to miss. It is called A Taste of Downtown Burlington, and it starts at six-thirty PM, and is at the amazing condo, four A of Schram's Corner, two eighteen Jefferson. So, if you have not bought one of your tickets from somebody, I'm still selling them, hint, hint, hint. I have a couple more to sell, too, I have, have a complete slate this year. So, again, look to people, um, selling Downtown Burlington. Hundred-and-forty-four Envelopes is the name of the fundraiser, and it's gonna be a really fun event. Uh, music, food, drinks, so, be there or- Be square. Miss out on C and Shane, cause he's gonna be there.
Don't say that, or nobody will come. Oh, they already bought their tickets, I guess it really doesn't matter. I'll just bring Tupperware it, I can next serving. Mr. Phillips?
Um, not, not really too much. Um, hopefully, we're gonna have some debates at some point in time for our candidates. Thanks, thanks to the two that, uh, showed up tonight, and, uh, you know, I, I was, I was lucky to have the great granddaughters of Thomas J. Smith in the, uh, city hall today. Uh, their great grandfather was the longest-serving mayor in this, uh, city, and yet they still, so, so many generations removed, had an interest to see the city council. So, anytime we can get people and have a room full of people, even if they disagree with what we're doing, or we can't reach, uh, an agreement, it's great to have people here. So, thank you very much, everybody, for showing up, and we do listen, so.
Well said. MPT?
I don't have a lot, I apologize for being late this evening.
What happens?
That's it, thank you.
Traffic gets pretty rough in this city sometimes.
It does, especially if you get on many, hit every.
Counselor?
Uh, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, uh, I just want to, uh, for those that are doing the Fight for Mayor contest, um, just wanna encourage the kids to get those papers in. I'll be going to, uh, Edward Stone tomorrow? Edward Stone tomorrow? Have to get okay, right?
I have to look.
Okay.
It's forty years.
It's forty years. I'm going somewhere tomorrow, and, uh, we're gonna tell them what it's like to be mayor. So, the last place I went to, they said, so all you have to do is shake hands, right? I said, yeah, so all I have to do is shake hands. You betcha. So, um, looking forward to that, and, uh, I just wanna encourage, um, uh, the parents also to, uh, to encourage the kids, bring them on down. The, the year is not over with, so we're still doing tours down here at city hall. Uh, if there are any classes that wanna come down, I will take you through, it would be my pleasure. Um, also, good to see Cameron tonight, how you doing?
Yeah, you missed my speech, man.
You did.
Did I?
It was-
Well, I'm sure, I got a piece up in Hy-Vee the other day, so we're all good. So, on that note, it's good to see you, Cam, it always is. Uh, your dad's one of my favorite people. Um, nothing else, counsel? Can I get a motion, please? Motion to close?
Second.
Motioned second by all three of you. Kathleen, let's do this.
McCamell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Oh, aye.